We're still waiting on Nick here.
Just started the webinar, so.
Can you hear me? Just wanted to check.
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, by the way.
Good evening.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Nick, by the way, we've already started recording because we got a call from somebody trying to join. So we started the meeting to see if that allowed them to join. But just want to let you know that the meeting is officially, the webinar is officially started.
All right, sounds great. All right, well, it's 5:15, so. Let's get into this. All right, hello, everyone. Welcome to the April Meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick Corcoran. I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits for consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the city of Binghamton. Based on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be present to constitute to the quorum. Tonight, we'll do our roll call to see the number of members we have, but it does appear that we have a quorum. But let's do the roll call first. Mario DeFolio. Paul O'Brien.
Yes, I'm here.
Jodi Angelo.
Here I am, rocky like a hurricane.
Kelly Oice.
Present.
Here.
All right, so that means we have six people present, so that we do have a quorum and can proceed. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. So I think we got minutes from the March meeting. Did anybody see anything in those meeting minutes that was inaccurate or that needs to be changed?
I was not in attendance, so I abstain from voting on these minutes.
All right, that sounds good. Anybody else see anything? If there's changes or anything, anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve?
All right, motion by Kelly. All right, seconded by Joe. All right, all in favor, Paul?
Yes, approve.
Joe?
Yes.
Chris?
Actually, I'm also going to abstain because I was absent last month.
Okay, Kelly? Yes, so that's, what was it, five yeses, four yeses, zero no's? All right. Next item on the agenda are seeker determinations. This portion of our meeting, the planning commission will be reviewing documentation provided by applicants for the first. Applicants will be called to the microphone where they will be asked to make a presentation describing their plans to the commission. And commission members may then ask questions of the applicant to clarify any items that are unclear. After all questions have been answered, the commission will deliver it and then either set a public hearing date for the project or request additional information before proceeding. To all our applicants will be presenting tonight, we ask that you please state your name and address for records before beginning your presentation. And we ask that any member of the team of your team who will be speaking, please give their name and address for our public records. Just a little housekeeping, so tonight, this meeting is being conducted in accordance with chapter one of the laws of the 2022 of 2022, which in part authorizes this public body to meet and take action authorized by law without permitting in public in-person access to meetings and authorize such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or similar service, provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceeding and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed. All right, so tonight's meeting obviously is on via Zoom. If anybody would like to call in via phone to listen, the phone number is 929-205-6099. And if anyone wants to call in during the public hearing portion of the meeting, I'll repeat the number at that point. But the number tonight to call in will be 607-772-7028. All right, so the first project for seeker determinations is for the applicant Charles Ackerman. The project address is 209 State Street. And this is a site plan review for a mixed-use building with ground floor, commercial space, basement, studio, gallery space, and 11 dwelling units from floors two to four in the C2 Downtown Business District. All right, does anybody from the project on the Zoom call today?
I'm sorry, this is Tito from the planning department. I just wanted to correct something from that description there. The units are actually floors one through four, so there are two units on the first floor, so that was just a typo on the agenda.
Okay, great.
Okay.
209 State Street, I'm the call.
So this is Elise Johnson Schmidt. I'm from Corning, New York, and our firm is at 15 East Market Street, Suite 202. I'm representing Charlie Ackerman, who is also on the call for the property at 209-211 State Street. Charlie, do you want to give your address?
This is Charlie Ackerman, 192 Front Street, Binghamton.
And so we are applying under C2 for the Downtown Business District for a building that is in great need of love and care. And we've been hired to design that building and to preserve it. And historic preservation tax credits are being sought for this project, so it has a high threshold for meeting historic preservation requirements by the State Historic Preservation Office and by the National Park Service. Also, we have on the call Chuck, who, Chuck Devine from our office. And Chuck, would you, would we be able to share our screen with you? Or do you not care to see the layout of the interior of the building? Is that not necessary? That's a question for you next, sorry.
Yeah, the planning department, in general, they usually will share the plans on the screen as you go. We have, we all have copies of them, if that's.
Okay. If you would like to see them, Chuck can bring them up if you share the screen with us to do that.
You know, are we able to share the screen or?
There we go. Okay, so. So there are four floors in the building plus a basement. And in the basement, we plan on having 10 artist studios. They range, they're small, they range from 158 to 226 square feet, which is intentional so that artists don't have a high rent to pay. And they share also restrooms, a little kitchenette, and some storage space. It has two exits out of the building and that are approached from opposite ends of that story. On the first floor, at the front of the building, you'll see a commercial retail space that opens out. And maybe this would be a good time to also show that the facade of the building, Chuck, would you mind switching to that one?
Yeah, I'm not controlling it, but.
Oh, okay, sorry.
It's the last sheet in the set.
Okay, so as you can see, this is the, this is the front of the building pretty much as it was early in its history. You can see that, I'm sorry, I jumped to the facade, but I wanted to relate the retail space to you so you could see where that was. So the left side of that, of the building, which includes a garage door opening that's glazed, so it's all glass, you can see inside, is replacing an existing garage door, but that garage door was early in its history, was added to the facade and as it was used for automobiles. And the transoms, which are original to the building, were altered. We're going with the original layout of the, of the transoms, but the, above the garage door, at some point, they heightened those transoms, so they were not in line with the original transoms that you see here. So we're keeping, we're going back to the, to configure the configure and the garage door opening. So the left side includes the left-hand doorway, the one window, and then the, and the garage door. And I believe, does it also, let's go back to the plan, but I think also that first door on the right-hand segment. So you can see, we'll come back to this, but I just wanted to orient you. If you, if you don't mind going back to the first floor plan that we're looking at. Okay, so actually, I was wrong, that, that entryway includes the two windows and the door on the right side. And, and then the, you can see that's where you get your mail and so forth, so the left side.
This is a, so we had two options. If you keep going up farther is the first floor plan that we were.
All right, we did, well, I'll explain in a minute why we did two different options, but. So in this floor plan, we have two units at the back of the building. And both of those units are accessible from the front. They can also be accessible from the, through a window at the back, because they're only a couple of feet off the ground in the back of the building. So we have emergency exit, but we also have sprinklering of the building, so. That is the reason that we have the one exit. Also, the other issue is, just so you understand the situation, the property line goes to the back of the building and does not include any space on the back, nor is it a public alley. It actually belongs to the church that owns the coffee shop building and the church that lives across the street. So we have one set of plans that allow us to have, with two exits, exiting only out of the front. Normally, we do exits out of the front and back to allow for parking in the back, but in this case, we don't have that opportunity. So you can see, it's a little confusing because there is a stairway. Well, there's a stairway shown, it's a new stairway that we've added, the darker one, that's actually in the elevator shaft. And that elevator shaft has been turned into the vertical, the vertical circulation for the building. So you see in sort of a peachy color on the left, you see one unit, and the pinkish color on the right is the second unit, and those are both two-bedroom units. Does anybody have any questions about this floor? Then we'll go on to the next floor. So in this particular case, we have.
Sorry, can I pause you for a minute? Sorry, it's, I'm going to unmute myself because, you know, computers are fun. Can we go back a minute to the first floor? So if I understood this correctly, now I'm learning now there's two alternate designs, A and B, which is already, I won't lie, confusing me, but anyways, for the first floor, the garage door that's being replaced by all glass paints, will, it will not be a working garage door, correct?
Yes, it will be, it will be a working garage door.
It will be a working garage door, okay, all right.
And we have seen a lot of this in some of the places that we work in Corning. For example, we have some places where we have garage doors that open up so that you can have, in nice weather, you can have outdoor seating. If it's a, if it's a restaurant, we've seen that in projects that we did in Watkins Glen. So that's the reason that we're leaving the garage door as it is. And it was a very early, it's a very early change too, by the way, when we can't, we have some historic photographs, we'd be glad to share with you. Okay, so on this, in the second story, if you go on to the next page, please. You can see that we have three units. We have, so we have three units on the second, third, and fourth floor, so a total of nine units on those three floors. We have our new stairway that you see at the right, and then we have a stairway that connects to it on the left. Technically speaking, there are two easements on the building, I'm sorry, there are two. What are they called? Easements, I guess they are, easements where Charlie's building actually owns part of the stairway on the left and the right. So in this particular case, we've, we're utilizing a stairway on the left. So the pink, the pink's corridor right there empties out into a corridor that goes out the front of the building. And the. So you have two exits left there from either side of the building. So we have a unit in the front that has three bedrooms, it's an ample-sized apartment, and then two apartments in the back that have two bedrooms each. And then we can go up to the third floor. Please, thank you. And then we have a similar layout, so all of the bedrooms have natural lighting. They each, some of them have multiple bathrooms, some of them have one bathroom, one and a half bathroom. The three-bedroom has two bathrooms. And again, the exiting left and right through the corridor. And then the fourth floor, which is in the next page, please. The fourth floor is the top floor, and it also has the same arrangement. So we have two bedrooms in the back in each of those two units, and we have three bedrooms in the front. And again, exiting out the left and the right side of the building. Charlie, do you want me to present the other option?
Yeah, let me just explain, so right now, there's some litigation that's happening with the easement that goes to the south of the building, to the left of what we're looking at. They're attempting to remove the easement. My attorney informed me that it's an incredibly difficult thing for them to remove the easement, but with that said, we wanted to have a secondary plan in case that is the case. So we created this second version, which would allow for this project to go forward without having to utilize the easement.
Okay, and so what, what's involved there is we have an exit out the back. So in the first, actually, if we go down to the basement, we'll show that. So we have the same arrangement as we had before. Correct, yes. And then we have on the first floor, now you can see that there's a corridor that instead of exiting to the left of the building or to the south, it exits out the back. And there's only a few steps up to get to ground level from there. And so we can see that we've had to cut out some square footage on the first floor to get that corridor out the back. It would exit out, what's now a window, that would become a doorway, and that doorway would be at grade as opposed to at the floor level that exists back there now, which is a few feet above, above grade. I'm not sure how that evolved over time, because there used to be a garage door that we've infilled on the right side. You can see the hatched marks on the wall in the back right corner. There used to be an, there used to be a garage door, so we're filling that in to go back to the, I think, the very original layout. And so everything is basically the same, except for where you see, yes, thank you. We've now added a stairway in that corridor. So it's taken out a little bit of space out of the two units, front and back, in order to provide that stairway. That, you can see that there's a stairway in the bottom right-hand corner. That also is an easement, so we have a sort of a similar setup, but the problem with that is that it's not far enough away from the other exit. So we just, we didn't bother to use that, so it's partly on Charlie's property and partly not on his property. So we're just sort of ignoring that. But we've added a new stairway on the left and the right side. And that's, you'll see, this is the same thing on the third floor and the same thing on the fourth floor. So we have a total of 11 dwelling units with two bedrooms in. Eight of them and three bedrooms, I'm sorry, yeah, three bedrooms in three of them. We have 10 artist studios, and we have one retail space that's undefined as far as who will be using it, so. But it'll be separated from, oh, actually, the building will be sprinkled. And as I said, it's in the C2 Downtown Business District. And it was, it's required that if you have more than five units in the Downtown Business District, that you are required to have, to ask for a variance, and also in the C2, there's no parking required with regard to the code. So that is the basic analysis of that building. And as I said, Charlie is going to great effort to restore the, the building in its historic configuration. We're leaving in some walls that exist on the upper floors, because those are important to the historic integrity of the building. And windows, I think on the third floor, is that right, Chuck? We're replacing the windows on the third floor with windows in keeping with the historic character. What was there?
I think the third floor on the front looked to be existing wood historic windows, so those ones will try to repair and restore.
Okay, and it's the second floor windows that were, we may need to replace. There you go. So you can see the condition of it today, needs a lot of TLC. And I'm excited to see how this building, assuming that you approve the project to move forward. I'm excited to see how that building could, could look in the future. Is there, do we also have a historic photograph there after that last one that you just showed us?
We can find one, yeah, I think we have one on our drive.
I mean, isn't, isn't there one, okay, I thought there was one at the end there.
No, for, I don't think we included one for the planning commission.
Okay, sorry about that. So if anybody has questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
All right, perfect. I'm gonna start off with just two questions. Number one, if you do wind up having to put the exit out the back, you probably have to look into that because you'll need an easement right through the neighbor's property.
Yes, that's, that's something that Charlie is pursuing, I'll let him talk about that, sorry, Charlie.
There exists an easement for use right now, so as long as our exit door is there, we can move in and out of it without needing any further easement.
Okay, so you can, you can put that door where the window is, and you still have an easement out to the sidewalk somewhere on the back side.
I have an easement use, that's correct. I can't, I can't build a staircase out there, but as long as we exit to grave, then that's within the right on the alleyway.
Oh, great, all right. And then the second question is, is that mural of the horse, the jockey on the horse, going to stay with the project?
But it is on board, it's on plywood. So when we move forward with the project, I'll be more than happy to donate to the city, and you guys can display it right down on Holly Street. I'm sure it'll make a lovely addition to your art space down there.
All right.
I think Nick, Nick might want it for his office, who knows? Nick, I do have a serious question.
Sure.
Um, looking through these plans, I didn't see anywhere where garbage is being collected. What's the plan for garbage and recycling collection within the building until stuff gets put out to the curb? I don't like, is there a dumpster that I missed, or what's, what's the story here?
Well, it, I mean, these are small two-bedroom and three-bedroom apartments. We were hoping to utilize the city's Blue Bag system. We really have nowhere to put the garbage otherwise. There is, multiple times a week, the city picks up on that block, we were hoping to utilize that.
This is Brian Seacrest, I'm counsel for the, for the planning commission. I can tell you that the city will be picking up at the Blue Bag system. However, I know others' buildings that have been converted similarly, that have issues with tenants putting it out illegally. And then there's fines levied against, or fees levied against the property for picking it up, and it's really annoying to the property owner. So if you had all kind of develop a way to have a storage space inside the building, so that your tenants have a place before they put it out to the curb, so it's not put out illegally, it may work to your advantage, and it's something that the, the planning commission routinely asked about. So it's just something for you to think about before next month.
I, I understand, and it's something that, that we've looked at. And seeing that we want to maintain the, the ground floor, I, I'm hoping to put some sort of art gallery into that space. And we're already pretty small on that. Really, our only option would be to chew something up in the retail space, or what would be the retail space. And we're, we're hoping against doing that. My real estate office is moving in down the street within a couple of weeks, so I will be in very, very close communication and contact with the building. And to my utmost to make sure that no one puts their garbage out, and if they do, I will certainly have eyes on it.
We understand that, and I'm sure that you will absolutely do that. The issue is 20 years from now, if you've sold it to somebody else, how do they deal with it? And I'm not certain if maybe if there's a space in like one of the artist spaces in the basement or something that could be used, or, I don't know. It's just something for you to think about, you don't have to do it, it was just a suggestion.
I appreciate it.
All right, any other questions or concerns from anybody? Well, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll make a motion that the proposal involves the reuse of an existing mixed-use building, which is a type-two action under seeker, and that no further environmental review is required.
I'll second that motion.
All right, seconded by Chris, all in favor. Oh, wait, the record show that Mario has joined the call as well.
He's in the room, he's in the room, I'm, I'm in favor, yes.
Mario's here, so Mario's, yes, Paul?
Yes.
All right, Joe?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, so that's seven in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at 5:20 at our next planning board meeting.
Great, so that would be a month from, four weeks from today, or how will that work?
Second Monday of next month.
Second Monday of May, which is May 9th.
Okay, hey, great, thank you very much, everybody, I really appreciate your support.
We just need a, we need a second on that.
I'll second that, this is Joe.
Seconded by Joe, all in favor, Mario?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joe? Joe?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yep.
Manny?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, that's seven in favor, zero opposed. All right, now you're, now you're also.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time and your consideration. And I hope that you will be as excited as we are to see this project move forward to the next step, so appreciate it.
Absolutely, good project, all right, we'll see you next month.
All right, thank you. Bye bye.
All right, onto the next item on the agenda, the public hearings and final deliberations. All right, in this portion of our meeting, we'll be holding open public hearings to obtain public opinion in regard to specific projects that are up for review. Applicants will be asked to come to the microphone and make a brief presentation describing their project. For most projects, this is the second time we're reviewing your information. So it would be very helpful if you could please give us a brief overview of the project to remind us what you're planning. And then clearly identify any changes that have been made since the last time we saw you. When the applicant is done presenting and any clarifications have been reviewed, we will open the public hearing and allow members of the community to speak about the applicant's proposal. After the commission has heard from all community members interested in speaking tonight, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate. To our applicants, when your project name is called, please come to the microphone and start off by giving the name and address of any members of the applicant's team that's planning to speak for a public record. And anyone from the community that we calling in tonight, we ask that you please start off by stating your name and address for our records. All right, so tonight, the one and only public hearing we have on the agenda is for the applicant Amicus NY LLC. Project address is one oh five Murray Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of a one unit dwelling into a two unit dwelling with a three bedroom unit and a four bedroom unit in the R three multi-unit dwelling district.
Nick, this is Tito again, so again, we have an error here, that should read two congregate living units. And just for the record, the public notice, the legal notice does state congregate living. This is just leftover from the old agenda.
All right, sounds great. All right, is there anybody on for the one oh five Murray Street project tonight?
Yeah, hi, I'm Paul Mingrino with Amicus Properties NY LLC. I reside at of, in our office at one ninety Sperry Road, Bethany, Connecticut.
And we have Jeffrey Smith and Kyle Weeks from Chanis Anderson Architects, thirty one Front Street, Binghamton. And we're working with Paul on this project.
Excellent. So what has changed since last month?
Do we have our updated site plan to share?
You should have that, we could pull that up.
I'm working on it, one second. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we updated the floor plan after the first meeting last month. And I think the biggest change you'll see is that we are providing five compliant parking spaces at the back of the property. And we're proposing that that is going to be achieved through use of previous paving surface. So in that way, there's no proposed increase to any of the lot coverage that exists there now. And based on the first review. We have made an application to the zoning board of appeals. Because on the driveway, we have a section that is reduced below nine feet. Wide by an existing entry porch. That meeting was supposed to happen last week, but it has been rescheduled for the second of May. We are seeking a area variance. Because nine feet is the required driveway for any use in the R three residential district. So we do not have that variance yet, but it is in process. So those are the two major points that were brought up at the first meeting that we were asked to address.
It sounds great. Is it, what happened with the zoning board meeting? Was it postponed or it just was straight up canceled?
That, that meeting was postponed to, to May, so the May, so the cases were shifted over to the May agenda.
Okay. All right, does anybody have any questions about the changes before we do a public?
Nick, just, just for those who weren't there last month, the reason why the porch that's obstructing the driveway can't be removed. It's because it's, if you see a picture of it, it's a historical, you know, molding and pillars. It contributes to the historical nature, that's why it's a designated landmark. Or it's historical structure, not landmark, but it's, it's contributing factor to it, which is why it cannot be removed to, to unobstruct the driveway. That's why they're going to get the variance for the zoning. It's only a foot short, and probably less than that short.
One more thing, if, if I could add, at the last meeting, this was presented as a two unit dwelling. We have since changed that to congregate living, per the applicant's request, based on, on what, how they, how they are proposing to use the property. The parking requirement for the two family with seven total bedrooms was five vehicles. They provided that. The parking requirement for congregate living with the same number of bedrooms, or in congregate living, they're called sleeping rooms. Is seven vehicles. So even though there's not a difference in the number of rooms, congregate living has a higher parking requirement, so that would need seven spaces. So one thing to consider is they've only provided five. The planning commission does have the authority to reduce parking requirements. In, in particular for local landmarks. It's encouraged to be able to rehab and preserve those buildings. So, but that's just something that you want to note, is that the parking requirement has changed to seven and there are only five shown.
Tito, for those of us that aren't professional planners. What, what, what does congregate living mean and how is it different than a two family house?
So a two, in the, in our code, a dwelling unit has to be occupied by a family or the equivalent of a family. And there are different tests that they can meet to show that they function like a family. Congregate living can be, does not have to be occupied by families.
It can be student housing.
Exactly.
Okay.
So the applicant is being, you know, forthright about what they intend, who they intend to rent to. And it's permitted in the zoning district, so they wanted to get that congregate living special use permit.
Fair enough. Well, let me, let me ask, direct this towards the applicants and the applicants architects before we start the public hearing. I'll be the bad guy, I often am the bad guy on these, on these calls. I have lots of concerns about off-street and on-street parking. One of the concerns I hear often, especially in these west side neighborhoods, is that the streets can quickly get overrun with too much on-street parking if enough off-street parking is not provided. So currently, the, the updated plans we're looking at right now on screen provide for five. And as Tito or Brian pointed out earlier, the, the planning commission does have the ability to waive those extra slots and let you go with five instead of seven. But I'll be the bad guy, you better convince me you need only five and not seven. And you're not gonna have two junky cars sitting on the street, driving the neighbors crazy.
That question's to us, correct?
Correct.
Well, if you look at the five actual spots, those are actual parking space. You have that entire side of the driveway to put probably, what they're already doing now is four cars. So you could put nine cars off the street if had to, back to back on, on, behind each other in the parking lot during a snowstorm, during any kind of, hey, there's no parking for my students or my renters to park. They're really physically can be put on there. We have five spaces to back out and drive out of the parking lot. But I have another four that they can park behind each other, if not more, if you want to make a parking lot, which I don't want that. So I would like, and normally, we don't have, a lot of these houses don't have the full amount of bed per person for car parking. And a lot of these kids don't have their, all, all these kids do not have their cars with them. But I do have it on this particular property, the, the ability to go ahead during snowstorms or when there's something else going on in town, or everybody else has got the street, I could put another four on top of the five actual spots. That's all I can, I, I would say on that. And again, not all these kids that are there now, this year, I have four cars out of the entire house that are staying there. Because we keep a log of their, whose cars, what their, their, their plate numbers, so we know, hey, you gotta move your car, what, what have you. We keep track of that as well, so nobody else is taking space in our driveways.
The congregate, congregant living situation exists now, and so we're trying to make it work with Amicus to make it better than it is. Right now, it's just stacked parking, so at least we're providing the ability for people to park in a spot and turn around and drive out. So there's gonna be an improvement right there.
All right. So how did you feel about that answer?
Yeah, I won't lie, I've been, I'm, I'm gonna let other people, I, I'm gonna stew on this, I'll let other people ask their questions, but I'm a, I'm a. I think you guys all know who've been on this commission with me for a while, and I'm a, I'm a parking skeptic, but let, let's keep rolling. Let's keep rolling with other people's thoughts and questions.
All right, anybody else have any questions before we open the public here? All right, well, let's, let's open the public hearing and see if there's anybody who would like to call in tonight. All right, so this is the public hearing for the applicant Amicus NY LLC. The project address is one oh five Murray Street. This is a site plan, plan review and special use permit for the conversion of a one unit dwelling into a into a two unit dwelling with a three bedroom unit and a four bedroom unit. So it's not really conversion into a dwelling, it's a congregant living facility in the R three multi-unit dwelling district. All right, if you would like to call in tonight to comment on this project. The phone number is six zero seven, 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 two, seven, zero, two, eight. And unfortunately, we don't have the ability to queue calls, so if you get a busy signal, just keep trying and we'll get you in. And is there anybody on the Zoom call tonight? For this project? That is calling in about this project from the public?
I see Bob Joseph in the attendees list. Not sure if he's looking to speak. We also did receive an email, which is on the screen now, from a Joy Archer, one eleven Murray Street. She's not opposed to the use. Her concern though is, is garbage. And she sent in a separate email pictures of student housing in the vicinity with garbage in front. Including this property.
Well, all I can add to that is we just purchased these properties with the past several months. And we are actually changing from your blue bag system to a paying for the service because your blue bag system does not work. These kids don't follow instructions properly and we end up having to go and manage it. So we've been adding tailored dumpsters and we've been, and, and, and putting out the actual canisters for them. And trying to, we, we don't want to deal with the notices of, hey, you gotta pick up your garbage. It, it's making it much better by me putting in the dumpsters in our properties and adding more garbage pit. It's just, it's a done deal, they're closed and it's it. That's all I can answer on, on that, and I agree with her because it's, it's, I, I pick up my garbage and then the next yard blows into it and we pick up their garbage as well. It's, it's just a, a problem, the blue bag system. I spoke with the mayor about this as well, and, and that's what the suggestion was. And we came to the reality of we pay for our own garbage, it's not a problem. And that's what we're doing. For that question.
Do we have any, any phone calls come in?
Nothing so far.
Thank you, how long have we been waiting? Has it been a minute or two?
Maybe like three minutes, two minutes.
Give it one more minute and then we'll.
Nick, while we're waiting for the, for potential other phone calls to come in, let me, if I may, direct a question to Tito and Brian. The, the applicants mentioned they've got the, the outstanding ZBA approval process. Should any of our approvals tonight be contingent upon ZBA approval at whatever their next meeting is?
Yes, i- i- if you want to, it, it would have to be subject to the zoning board approval of the variance.
Okay.
No calls yet. I did ask Mr. Joseph in the chat if he would like to speak, and I have not gotten a response on that.
All right, we're seeing nobody raising their hand on the Zoom call and no calls coming in. We will close the public hearing for this project. All right, any, any last questions, comments, further discussion? Chris, I appreciate the, the parking comments. In general, I'm almost always in agreement. For this particular project, the fact that they're doing something with this building does, does skew my leaning towards approval with the reduction on the parking for me. Just putting that there, if anybody else wants to comment on the parking.
Next, this is Joe, can you hear me?
Yes.
How many, this is directed to Amicus, just as a question. How many beds are there, how many students sleep in the house, you know, if it's fully occupied?
Seven. Three upstairs, yep. Yeah, three down, no, no, seven, three downstairs, yeah, and four upstairs.
Okay, so seven students and without stacking cars in the driveway, out back you have five?
You have five out back, straight across, five.
And any. Because you keep track.
Are you asking how many they have now and how they stack at, park now? Or are you asking how they will park if the project goes forward?
No, I, I'm asking right now, how many, how many beds are in the building for students? And if the project, yes, Brian, if the project goes forward, how many places will they have? So there's seven? The most you can sleep is seven, if everyone has one bed. And, and if this passes, you'll have five spots?
That is correct, what, what we have now is, is, is four to five spots, but they're stacked. There are two and two, and then another car on the side of the house.
Okay.
What's existing?
Trying to rationalize that in my head of, of the, the capacity.
Got you. Theoretically, the parking capacity is increasing with this project. But they're going from having stacked, which is improper parking spaces, to having a combination of approved or legal parking spaces with unapproved parking spaces, that the stacked spaces that would, that'll still exist.
That's a correct statement.
Thank you, Brian, that clears it up in my head. Thank you.
We're working with, with Amicus to, to make this project as compliant as possible because right now. It exists with seven bedrooms. We're not adding any bedrooms. We're not adding any students or anything else. We're just trying to make it legal. In the zoning, uh, with, with the, the tools and the lot size that we're given.
Any other, uh, questions, concerns?
Nick, just, just one more comment for me before I, before I sign off. I, I certainly appreciate the applicant w- working hard to go from stacked parking to five legal parking spots here. My concern is, is that is five enough? Like, do we really need to hold them to a higher standard and require them to go to full seven? That's all.
That makes sense. All right. Well, let's do this. I'm going to make a motion and we'll see, uh, we'll see how it, uh, how it turns out. All right. So. So this is a type two action under seeker. So no environmental review required. We signed off on that last week. So I'll make a motion that the requirements for the site plan review and special use permit. Have been met with the, um. The stipulation that, uh, the planning commission reduces the required number of parking spaces by two. So that the, it's okay that they're only providing five parking spaces. And that the, uh, approval is contingent, uh, getting the zoning approval for the variants.
Drive aisle width variance.
Drive aisle width, yes.
I'll second that, Nick.
All right. Seconded by Paul. All in favor, uh, Mario?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Wow.
Joe?
Yes.
Chris?
No.
Okay. Uh, Kelly?
Yes.
And man?
Yes.
All right. I'm also a yes. So that's six in favor, one opposed. All right. Uh, Brian, you want to weigh in? Does that, uh, that's an approval, right?
That is a majority. That is an approval.
All right. All right. So you're off and running.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good luck with your zoning review.
Thank you.
Fingers crossed.
Thank you, guys. Girl. Bye bye.
All right. So that concludes public hearings and final deliberations. Uh, so then we are on to other business. Is there any other business?
Correct. There is not.
No other business. All right. Does anybody else have any other business they want to bring up? Hearing of the grievances tonight.
Is this where we should ask our, our monthly, hey, will we ever be live again in person question?
I've stopped giving the answers because I never know what the governor's going to do.
I think we will know while thi- this current executive order expires on the, I think on the fifteenth. So we should know soon whether it's going to be extended or not.
It seems to be running in the other direction. I, some big city today, the starting, um, mask and everything again. I forgot which one.
Yeah. I wouldn't remember telling you guys probably six months into this, that we would probably be back live the following month. And it's like, I've been wrong every month since, so.
And does it look like, uh, the, the revised requirements or whatever are going to start putting it more, uh, back to local municipalities to make the decisions?
They've been pretty much doing boilerplate the same they've done for the last three or four.
I, I, I'm only asking because I, I know I was supposed to, I was doing a Johnson City planning board meeting and they did, uh, the hybrid thing where you could come in person. And, uh, I think Vestal did the same thing.
I think there's an option of that. The, one of the issues is we need to start and we negotiate getting guards for out sitting out, even there's the security. Considerations and getting that it takes a considerable amount of time just to get those types of things. If I sort of things that run in the background. And city, the, the chambers is still, while the physical structure is pretty much completed, there are some technical. Electrical stuff that still needs to be wrapped up.
Okay.
Council has gone to the point where they can meet in person. They don't all come there, but they can be in person. They allow the public to participate remotely. Sort of a hybrid mix.
Okay. We're getting an update before the next meeting.
It will be nice.
All right. Anything else? I think that's it then. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a. Go ahead.
Motion by Chris, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. See you next month.
Bye bye.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone.
All right.